I'd like to call the Monday, November 18th, 2013 regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. The public may comment on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record is already closed. Generally, the time limit for public comment is three minutes. And that's -- I have one slip today from Paul Conti. And so, Paul, go ahead and come on up and please state your name and address as usual. Thank you.
So my name is Paul Conti, 1461 West 10th Avenue. And actually, I don't have any remarks. I'm just -- wanted to hand out -- Stephen Hyde, or the Chair of the JWN, asked me to hand you a transcript of an email -- excuse me, email exchange from last Friday which is pertinent to your discussion today, and that's all I have to say.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And this is related to, looks like, related to our public hearing tomorrow night?
Well, it's a -- I think you're going to -- there's two issues. The public hearing -- excuse me, this chair's got a funny bottom to it, trick bottom. But the public hearing tomorrow night, there will be people speaking to the specifics of the potential designation. Staff at kind of the last hour has indicated that they are going to discuss with you today some additional process issues. So this is about the process, not about the specific designation.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. I don't have any other green slips, so I'm assuming no one else would like to speak at this time? Okay. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item 2, Envision Eugene Employment and Industrial Lands Deliberations. And we have Teri and Zach and Catherine. And let -- Teri, do you want to do an introduction?
Sure. Sure. Okay. So we are here to deliberate on the employment and industrial lands zone changes and code amendments for which you had a public hearing on November 5th over at Harris Hall. And in your materials, I've summarized and included all of the testimony that you received on these topics at the hearing. I believe there were 12 people testifying, and then 34 pieces of written testimony. So those are all attached. You've received it previously, but it's all in one place attached to today's packet. We have two meetings scheduled for deliberations on these topics. And Bill and I met and talked about how we would go through these, and I know you sent an email following up on that. So the agenda for today would be to walk through what I've summarized as key issues. They were really questions you asked after the hearing and get kind of the big picture direction from you, hopefully, on those. And then if we have time, we'll start going through the code in a linear fashion. And I've put that up on the whiteboard behind you just so I can keep track visually of where we are. And of course, some of the key issues relate to specific sections in the code, so it may be impossible to just do it this way, but we're going to give it a try.
Okay.
That make sense?
Thank you. And I'm hoping that does make sense. As we discussed it, we thought, kind of starting at that 50,000-foot level, like I sent out in the email, and kind of hitting some of these larger topics that we had brought up last time, and then discussing those. And I'd like to just do the go-around again and try that and see how that works for us. It seems to be working, I think, pretty well. And then we'll have that second opportunity as we go through the line item portions of the code to talk about some of those key issues as they relate specifically to the code, maybe today if we have time, but if not, at our next deliberation meeting. So with that, I think I'll -- any process questions on that? Okay. All right. I hadn't got any emails back, so maybe if I can start with Commissioner Jaworski?
Okay. Well, we're just talking on key issues.
Yeah, key issues. And actually, what I'd like to do is start with the potential non-conforming uses, and then maybe if we start with that and then work our way through handcraft industry and then as we go through that way. So that may work faster.
My only comment was I didn't know where it would go in the process is that under those key issue listed, I also had several other key issues and those that have come up at Planning Commission meetings prior. Those would concern -- and we can put them in any order you want, Chair, Mr. Chair. The site removal requirement.
Site review, you mean?
Yeah, site review removal issue, which I think is a very general issue, and I'd like to comment whenever you feel appropriate on that as we go down. Specifically, the Section 9.2451, which is dealing with, on page 111 of the PC Agenda, which deals -- I'm specifically concerned with Items 1, 3, and 4. I view this as a proliferation and a change of what that area is designated for as light industrial or even E1 to too much commercial. And I'll cite references in Envision Eugene and also references from the Refinement Plan that talk in a different vein about these uses. And then later on, when we go through the code criteria, I don't see them as outstanding issues, I'll talk about setback in outdoor storage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So those will come up, I think, probably a little later in our discussion. So at the front end, what I'd like to do is maybe if anybody has any issues with the potential non-conforming uses -- that was one of our questions. Actually, since I'm going this way and I'm next in line, that was one that I had brought up and had suggested the possibility of allowing pre-existing -- making sure that pre-existing non-conforming uses didn't get, you know, cut out of the whole picture. And I see staff's response here. And I guess my question related to that would be considering them as legal pre-existing, I think is where it ended up, legal pre-existing rather than non-conforming use. If there's a sense from staff how that might affect financing on projects, that maybe they have a conditional use permit, they've already got some things started, or they want to do some remodeling or refinancing. If that then helps with being designated as legal pre-existing rather than a non-conforming use.
Specific to churches.
Specific, yeah.
That's the proposal that we're putting out there for churches. And since they would be retained in the use table as conditionally permitted, the ones that have their conditional use permits, I think that protects them as if they are today. We can certainly ask someone who would have more knowledge about the financing end that question, or maybe Mr. Close, who is representing the church, if he thinks that that would be satisfied by our proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any more on that, Catherine?
Oh, I was just going to say that we already do. The code already has a section on legal pre-existing uses in 9.1240.
Catherine, if you could get the mic right. Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, much better.
So I'll start over again. The code already has a section on legal pre-existing uses in Section 9.1240. And it was created when we did the code rewrite in 2001, 2002. And what it does, which I'm hopeful is addressing your question, is it says these uses in this list, which churches would be added to, are considered pre-existing uses, and they are not subject to the non-conforming use sections of the code. So that -- I mean, I'm not an appraiser, but I'm thinking that that would --
Sounds to me like that should cover it.
Provide the --
We have one at the table.
We have. Is Commissioner Duncan wanting to weigh in on this with previous experience?
It tends to be the words that finance company or financial institutions flip out about, so if it's referred to as non-conforming, that's where their yank's going to be. So as long as you can say it's a legal pre-existing use, and there's no information that would suggest it would go -- that it wouldn't change into perpetuity, or at least the extension of a loan, most of them should be happy.
So it sounds like that language would work.
I think so. Yeah, I don't see any problem with it. I'd like to see us get the words "non-conforming" out of our code, but that's another issue for another time.
Another issue, another time. Put that in our bin.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That was all that I think I had on potential non-conforming uses. And I'll just kind of visually look down. Does anyone else have anything on those? Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Well, I don't know that it's directly -- I can't find my notes on it, unfortunately, but there was --
Steve, we can't hear you at this end.
It wasn't so much non-conforming -- it wasn't so much the non-conforming uses as it was the ability to expand. And we had some clause in there somewhere about 50% of the frontage or something. There was some -- and it may not, you know --
Yeah, we toss around a couple options for how to allow expansion of existing CUP holders, and the way we've proposed it is that they would be able to apply for expansion on the same development site through the CUP modification process.
But not to an adjacent site?
Right, yeah. It's just some of the wording there, I think we might want to come and take a look at.
Okay. So we could maybe revisit that when we get there.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski, next.
I guess my concern is that we're saying, yes, okay, these two churches that have raised their hands, we'll let them in there. And I don't know if I have a problem with churches with a CUP being allowed outright or whatever, you know? Just because these guys had a CUP or were, you know, aware enough to do it, you know, there may be other churches that -- you know, this is something that's looking far forward. And, you know, we're saying, well, yes, they can do it because they got their foot in the door in 2013. And, you know, the argument that was made at the public hearing is that, yes, churches in the past may have been, you know, used primarily on Sundays, but as we can see with one of the projects that's going forward, it's they're developing more into community-type centers, which do have a fair amount of employment to them. So I'm more concerned about, you know, just saying it's just these two. You know, I would like to maybe see it put back in there as a line and allowed it. And I would like to hear the argument from staff as to why that would be a problem. I didn't hear that. All I heard was, you know, staff said, no, and it's because they take up more land for parking and this and that. So, I mean, I see the potential because the argument was made for some -- a good argument was made by somebody who had it in the -- that was there and might want to expand, and somebody who is there and getting ready to build. You know, just because those two were there, those were compelling -- compelling enough arguments for staff to change it for them, why not for everybody? That's my feeling on that. So I wasn't swayed enough to have it taken out.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Duncan, and then Commissioner Belcher had a comment.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Borowski on this. I really hadn't thought about it until the public hearing, but it really made sense to me that these are really becoming community centers, and they need some -- they need larger lands, which we are limited on. Commercial lands tend to be very expensive in comparison to these types of lands, which tend to be a little less expensive. And as was said, they are community centers now for a lot of these. People are not going out and building large, multi-tens of thousands of square feet building to meet on Sunday. These things are being used probably almost more than a lot of employment centers are. They're being used almost seven days a week. I'm sort of the same way, that I would like to see them sort of go back to the way they were. I don't think it, from an employment standpoint, that one could prove up that the employment really is higher in general employment in lands in our E1 and E2 areas compared to these churches. So I would be happy to see that. The other thing I found interesting is we tend to talk in -- this is, I guess, a clarity question. We tend to talk about development sites, is sites in contiguous ownership. And when I had read this, and maybe I misread it, I was under the impression that what we were proposing is that an existing facility buys the site next door to continue to expand, that they would be allowed to do that. But I think I just heard somebody sort of say that's not true, that our development site is defined a little differently.
Well, the way we proposed it, the intent was to limit it to the land covered by their existing CUP.
Mm-hmm.
You could have that discussion if you want to do it differently.
I think what came up was a suggestion that I might have made to allow an expansion up to 50% onto an adjacent parcel as a modification to the conditional use permit. And I think staff came back and said, no, they would prefer that in order to protect the industrial lands, at least if I'm understanding this right, to protect those industrial lands and employment lands, to allow the expansion, but only on the property that was already purchased and already part of that original CUP. And I think that's, if I'm relaying staff's thought.
Essentially, that's right. And it's not something I think we would get appealed on from the state or anything like that in terms of, oh, no, you're not providing good enough industrial land because you allow churches. I don't think it's that big of an issue. But in discussing our limited land supply, we felt like a feasible way to create this new zone that's allowing a lot of new employment uses, E1, and also protect those that have invested. This was kind of the compromise solution that we're putting forward. But I think you could go safely either side of what we're proposing a little bit.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, Ms. Harding basically spoke to what my concern is, and that is, if indeed there's a great demand for churches in E1, what does that do to the other uses in E1? So I think we have to weigh the fact that we're doing this because we have a dearth of industrial lands and our industrial land supply. We're trying to create more opportunity. Are we taking away from that? I don't know the answer, but I think the question needs to be asked.
And I'll jump back in, and then Commissioner Jaworski, and then Commissioner Mills. Let me write those down first. If I don't forget. And I know initially I was the one that proposed the expansion onto an adjacent site. I think as I've looked through this, though, and with the purpose of the E1 zone and recognizing that churches are proposed to be allowed outright in the E2 zone, that I, from my perspective, I think it's a compelling argument to allow expansion on the original site, but not to an adjacent parcel because of trying to protect those as employment and industrial lands. I'm also not sure that, you know, with the purpose of the E1 being a large number of employees per acre or high employment density, that starts to bring up some questions in my mind as far as the church use in an E1 specifically. And we're also not allowing, if I'm remembering right, live theaters in E1. Is that right? There -- I think when I looked at that, as far as the community center type use, where churches often will have a large auditorium with a stage, I looked at live theater and some of those other uses, and I believe it was consistent with that. And so that kind of swayed me back to kind of the compromise that we -- We have restored the live entertainment as a conditional use. You did restore it as a conditional use?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I read that differently.
Limited to existing buildings.
That's true. With that restoration, we've also put back in the special limitation note there was there previously that limited those uses to existing buildings. And I think that's what I remember now, that it was in an existing building, so.
I've just got to follow up on that.
Okay.
Well, let me -- maybe that's where I'm not clear, because on page 106 in the table, when we talk about churches, synagogues, and so on, under the E2, there's a place there that we inserted adoption date. So it's permitted as long as they currently exist?
Not -- yeah, it's confusing. There's two line items for churches and similar uses. The second one says those that are not yet in existence.
That's the --
For the new ones, yeah. Those are permitted outright in E2. And then the ones that --
Okay, so I was confused. Just so I'm clear on that, because I might change my mind then. So if they don't exist as of a certain date, they will be permitted after that date?
In E2, yeah.
In E2.
We're treating E2 differently from E1.
Why are we putting an adoption date in the code? Does it matter?
That's the way we've dealt with it in the past for uses that we regulate, that we kind of let in the door before adoption of a new ordinance. But this has yet to be gone through the fine legal comb, so.
Oh, so the plan that -- I'm sorry to keep going on this.
No, that's okay.
The plan then is to insert some date prior to when the code becomes adopted?
Well, when this gets adopted, that'll be the date.
That'll just put in there.
Right.
I think you actually touch on kind of a clerical or a typo in this, the second listing relating to E2. We probably don't need that adoption date.
If that's the case, then I want to change what I was going to say, because I was looking at this saying that it's permitted as long as -- and I had assumed that date was going to be like the date for E1. That they had to basically be pre-existing.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, that's definitely not the intent. It's new ones. This is trying to regulate new ones.
Okay.
Okay.
I've never seen us put a date in for new code.
Yeah, I'm not --
Take it out.
I'm not sure that's necessary.
Okay.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was supportive of the staff's recommendations on the non-conforming uses relating to churches, and the further discussion has even more clarified my support of that. In reference to the additional discussion brought up by Commissioner Borowski and Duncan, as far as allowing churches outright, I would generally oppose that, but I'm specifically speaking in relationship to, let's just say, the E1 area. I don't know if that would have to be taken on a case-by-case, because I'm not that familiar with the others. But in the E1 area, as also spoken by Commissioner Randall, the idea is to have this for job creation. And secondly, if you look at this specific area where the E1 designation is, within walking distance of that, there are six large churches already existing. And so if you're looking for neighborhood churches, that's not the case here. And of those six, probably three or more are considered regional churches. So you have maybe the benefit of some usage that they might allow if you can get access to their facilities, but you also have the detriment of a lot of traffic because they're regional churches and they're not really neighborhood churches per se. But I just think that if they wanted something like that, it would have to be on a case-by-case. And I think in the north section, E1 area, where the church already exists, there's not that many more open properties for additional churches, and there's quite a few churches in the area.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I'm struggling here a little bit. I guess at the 50,000-foot --
Commissioner Mills, can you use the microphone? I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes. At the 50,000-foot level, I guess I have a concern that takes me off into my other question about land inventories. As we start putting more and more things into the E2 allowed and the E1 allowed, we start competing with other uses for the future. And kind of, I've asked about the inventories. I guess I'm a little concerned about what uses are foreseen in the Envision Eugene process, where these uses are seen as part of the demand for these categories. If they aren't, then I have a concern about getting too liberal in allowing them. So I'm inclined to not allow any more in my thinking than what is already proposed, that being expansion on existing properties, certainly nothing allowed on adjacent properties. And I'm hesitant to even say that, given the impact on land inventory for employment lands.
Thank you. And remember, at this point, we're still talking big picture stuff, and we'll, when we get to that line item in the code, we can revisit that too specifically. So -- and I know, but I think this discussion's good. So any other at the 50,000-foot level on this? Okay. Let's move to the next one with Handcraft.
Commissioner Randall, could I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
Because someone's here listening about the uses that we reinstituted, the Ballet, Dance, Martial Arts, and Gymnastics School. We got a lot of testimony on that, and put it back in the code as conditional in E1 and I2. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
And if you don't have any comments on it, then I'm assuming you agree with that.
You should clarify that it's in existing buildings, though, not in new building.
That's not the case.
That's not the case for those. For theaters, it is. There's a special use limitation.
And those were placed back in as conditional uses in E1 and outright -- well, they're already outright permitted in E2, conditional in I2.
Exactly. Thanks.
Handcraft industry.
Well, did we want to have a discussion on what you just brought up?
Is there discussion on ballet studios at that 50,000-foot level in those zones as conditional uses?
Okay. The difficulty I'm having here is because to talk about that would get into my overall general thing, which was what I referred to as my concerns on 9.2451, which is 134, which might relate to what Commissioner Mills was saying, is proliferation of additional uses in the E1.
Stop you there, though?
Yeah.
These don't have those special use limitations.
Doesn't matter. You're putting them outright, and it goes to the same conversation to me of so many uses in there that you -- I don't want to get in -- I don't know when you want to get into that. I have some statements from the Refinement Plan that talk about commercial and how it's being served in that area as far as policies, which --
Okay, specific to the E1 zone.
Yes, I'm talking the E1 zone. So I think it's related, because, you know, when you get to all these uses and someone, excuse the expression, wants to make a dollar, all of a sudden, we're not creating jobs, we're creating all these uses. And that whole industrial area ends up being a lot of commercial, a lot of other types of activities, a lot of restaurants, and, as you indicated, all these other kinds of uses. And that's not the intention for those. And specifically, I thought, when you look at Envision Eugene, one of the statements in it, under new capacity in the UGB, and I think I'm looking at page 4-7, it says, "Expand code flexibility for commercial uses through redesignation on smaller, underutilized industrial sites, generally under three acres in size." In the E1 area, those lots that are available are not three acres under. They're larger lots, and I don't want to see a proliferation of these kinds of things occurring there. And I'll talk more specifically on that when we get into it, because I have a backup information for this.
Okay. So maybe the right time to get into the details of that would be when we talk about the use table in detail?
I'm thinking that probably makes sense. And so we'll, I think, when we get into that, specifically talk about the ballet and dance studios and churches when we get into that part of the table.
That makes sense. I do want to clarify that these uses exist as conditional in those zones currently. So we're not proposing to make a change and allow new uses to consume land in those zones in the case of that use or churches.
The only change on churches is they're currently conditional in E1, and the proposal is to --
Shut the door on that.
Shut the door on new conditional uses in E1, which I think is part of that discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Let's -- I think let's revisit that when we get to the table, and I'm making notes here, and staff help me make sure we cover that when we get there. Handcraft industry. Any Commissioner comments on staff's proposal on handcraft? And I know that's also going to show up in Number 2 when we get to that point, so.
Yeah. And I don't think this was really a key issue, actually, but more of a --
A concern, I think.
It was a concern that some people had about how we're allowing, continuing to allow those. And for the audience's sake, handcraft industry doesn't go away as a concept, it just is permitted under manufacturing, not as a line item.
And then the manufacturing, whether it's handcraft or otherwise.
Or not, yes.
It's still manufacturing.
Absolutely, we want it.
Yeah, okay. That moves us to the effect on land inventories, which we've kind of talked a little bit about. Any other big picture comments on that? Commissioner Baker?
Well, it's reflected later on, too, but again, my concern is we're going to be proposing later on, we're going to be proposing later on to add some more industrial land because we don't have any large sites, and we're not providing any protection for the large sites that there may exist in E1 now. In fact, we're, you know, in other words, there's some changes proposed here that would allow us now to go from 10 acres to 2 acres, which seems to be in the wrong -- I mean, we have to figure out some way to guarantee that we have large industrial sites. And if we can't figure it out in some way to deal with it here, how are we going to deal with it when we add properties, you know, that are outside the UGB, and we have to go through a whole new process? So if we can't figure it out here, we've got a significant problem, because we'll have the same problem there. So we need to figure out a way, some strategy to deal with large acreage properties, you know, partitioning or whatever. So you might still allow development on 2-acre sites or smaller or whatever, but you don't allow partitioning of -- and there aren't that many of them. You can look on the map and see there's only four or five, you know, there's only a handful in E1.
Okay. And that's actually going to be Number 5 when we get to that point, I think. So we'll come back to that. Part of the challenge with this format is we had some of our questions, and then we kind of distilled it into those six big topic items. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure I'm remembering correctly, and that's where going to -- Handcraft Industries, has that been previously allowed in an I3? to, handcraft industries, has that been previously allowed in an I3?
So.
Doesn't seem appropriate to me. So I would be.
What page are you on?
Do we have a definition?
We'll look up.
I'll just, I'll just say, if it's not currently allowed, I would not be in favor of allowing it in I3 above, unless there's, unless there's smaller lot I3s, like, you know, under an acre or two acres. But I wouldn't want to see any large I3 acres, acreages, perhaps I can envision a nonprofit purchasing it and putting it into handcraft or portions of it and then leaving the other parts undeveloped and we wasted a, a large lot. So I've got great hesitancy in allowing that in I3.
Commissioner Duncan?
Do we have a definition of handcrafted in our code?
No, all it says is small-scale manufacturing. And as Terry mentioned, we don't regulate the scale of a manufacturing use in any of the zones. So it was just really a cleanup measure to remove that because it was confusing to people because it wasn't defined and it didn't provide any clarity to the public as they were looking at the list. If you're going to be a manufacturer of clothing that you make by hand, you would just be a manufacturer of clothing, which is listed in the code as allowed. So we don't regulate the scale of it.
I guess, you know, I3 is designated as heavy industrial and I don't see how you get small-scale manufacturing and heavy industrial as being the same thing or close to the same thing. To me, they're entirely different in their intent.
So noted.
Did the explanation about the land inventories make sense in terms of the plan designation and that's how we count things? I, I feel like I should respond to the large lot issue that Commissioner Baker brought up.
To me, it was, if I'm understanding it right, is, is it's justification for what we're doing as an efficiency measure and not a plan amendment?
Right.
Or change? Is that?
Yeah. So it's a timing issue, really. We're adopting efficiency measures ahead of adopting our entire comprehensive plan. And so right now, we have these areas designated for industrial and that's their, that's how they're counted in our, in our buildable lands inventory. So in our findings, your draft findings, there is no effect on the inventory. These create additional jobs, we hope, through the additions to the use lists that we're adding. Okay. Just as a quick response to the 10-acre issue, because I know that'll come up, the existing code for I1 has a funky reference to site plan review in the lot standards table. So it already allows 2-acre minimum, but it requires a site plan review to go from 10 acres to 2 acres. And at the time I1 was written, that area was not parceledized yet. And so to avoid the area getting chopped up into 2-acre parcels before the road layout was even put in, there was this sort of interim step of 10-acre parcels. And you can see that on Chad Drive and then a few that are smaller parcels that have been approved. So I think that will come up again when we talk about whether to lift site review or not. And it relates to that, that standard and the way the lot standard, or lot size table is constructed. I'll stop there.
Just to follow up, though, we have, we have a deficit in large lots for industrial purposes. So how do we solve that by allowing people, making it easier for people to chop up the few larger lots? Because we're not, we haven't annexed, we haven't, you know, how do we solve our problem by allowing people to chop up the few big lots that we have left into smaller lots, making it easier for them? That's all I'm asking as a question.
Okay.
It doesn't seem like it makes sense.
Okay. Carolyn?
It is a good question and it's a concern that I had when I first saw that, that provision, too. I think in, in looking back at the Envision Eugene, particularly the technical summaries, if you look at those, you see where we have the shortage of, of large lot industrial properties, I believe is in 20-acre plus.
Okay.
Right? And, and you're absolutely right. So for the future potential expansion areas, we need to be able to put some mechanism in place that means that those don't get subdivided below the 20, the 50 and the 100 acres that have been identified as a need. So that is absolutely part of the plan for that area. This area is a little bit, is a little bit different in that it just brought up those same questions for me about why we would be wanting to parcelize some of those kind of medium-sized lots. And Terry walked me through it and I, I think I understood it, but I think there's more discussion about that, that we should, we should have once we get to that part in the table.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I just quickly want to say that this is a concern of mine as well. To solve our problem by saying we're going to let these go and move out doesn't work for me. I'd rather see if we can find a way to more optimally use those lands we have inside the urban growth boundary. If you tell me that can't do, then that's okay. But I'm curious as to why we aren't making an effort to try to consolidate parcels to meet that need rather than letting them be chopped up and move outside the current urban growth boundary.
Just, just real quickly, we don't have the 20-acre sites. And so your, your comment about wanting to join some together, aggregate, we do have actually a, a plan to do some of that in this area. And so we do need to be mindful of that. But we're not expanding, we're not proposing to expand the urban growth boundary for any of those 10-acre sites. They would all be the larger sites that are really difficult to, to get through some kind of aggregation.
I understand, but I'd still rather do the best, our best effort to aggregate before we expand.
Yep.
Head Commissioner Duncan and then Commissioner Jaworski.
Well, I think just to kind of put this in perspective, we only have really two vacant sites out on Chad Drive. The rest of them are developed, except it looks on this particular map like it is, but realize that this is the home of the new VA clinic up here in this corner. So it's already spoken for. And I don't think there's more than about five sites out on Greenacre, excuse me, out in Greenhill Technology Park that we're talking about. And they are actually all are sort of, they have buildings between them, so they can't even be aggregated anymore. So they are now, and most of those are 5 to 10 acres out there even. So there's going to be, we're talking a very few number of sites here.
Thank you for that. Just, Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Duncan. There are not that many sites out on the Chad. However, an approach, rather than subdividing those sites, it would seem to me you would try to develop incentives to make it not more flexible to do so, but incentives to have them developed easier and maybe even allow a combination. There are two vacant sites that are next to each other and it would be great to have a 20-acre site developed. I think that's a better approach than going in the other direction, specifically also because if you look at this in relationship to the, some of the other areas, it's, it's located in a place in the city that has access, multiple ways to the turnpike and other things, which are what are needed for these industrial. And we're not talking about something that's in the middle of the city per se and has to go through other types of streets to get to these main corridors or turnpikes. So that's a critical area that should really be maintained for light industry or whatever rather than go in the direction of, and by the way, I'd like to see some sort of definition as was suggested on handcraft because even if you have to put production limit, I mean, if someone is making jewelry in their home, that's handcraft, is that considered manufacturing? Where do you, you know, you have to have some way to draw the line on where does it become manufacturing? Either by volume sales or something or a number of employees. Otherwise, it can be a single person. Just a comment.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was mainly concerned about looking at Chad Drive, but we have two other parcels that are comparable to the one that was very difficult to cite to begin with. So obviously, there was, there is a need for some 10-acre sites. We don't have a lot of, looking at the 10-acre sites that we have, you know, and so we could chop a few more of them off the list, eliminate them as possibilities. But we just went through a very involved process to find a 10, you know, a substantial site here for the VA clinic. And it wasn't easy. So I would be reluctant to assume that our need is only on 20 and 50. Clearly, we had other issues because we didn't have, you know, it wasn't like there were, you know, oodles and oodles of properties that could meet the VA needs. There were only a few in the city of Eugene and a few more in Springfield. So, you know, I don't think we should sort of take 20 acres as some magic number and that's our only shortage. It's clearly, that's not our only shortage of sites.
Another thing maybe to think about is we're, we're making a lot of changes to the E1 zone, which is currently I1. So lot size doesn't have to be one of them. And, and again, I'm, I wasn't proposing to really reduce, we reduce it below what's already allowed. It's just sort of the process and timing of when that acre would be, 2-acre size site would be allowed. But we are opening the door to lots of uses that were not previously allowed. So just something to consider as we consider how far open to open the door.
And so while this also deals with the effect on land inventories that we're talking about, it really hits at item five that was that one specific proposal, I think, about lot standards in the table.
Exactly. That's what that is.
And so that's really, I think, the, the issue that we're, we're talking about there. And I think that comes, that'll come up again as a line item when we get there. And I'm, like I say, I'm trying to make good notes of this as we go through. So hotels in E1.
Okay.
Any comments on that? That was a general staff's recommending not, let's see, does not recommend adding hotels to the E1 use list because the zone's intended for larger employment uses. Any commissioners have problems or concerns with that? Commissioner Duncan?
Well, it's interesting, the, as we talk about E1, we tend to hone on the Chad Street, but we also have another E1 out there that we're talking about. So we have to pay attention to that. I, certainly in the Chad area, if I'm not mistaken, there's actually a piece that's just outside the E1 boundary we're talking about, I think is slated for a hotel, if I remember right, this little odd-shaped piece up. I don't know if you can see it, but it's that piece right there.
Yeah, C2.
It hasn't been built.
Is that the Ledgeston Hotel?
Pardon?
Is that the Ledgeston Hotel that Arley has proposed?
I think so, yeah.
I think it's off Suzanne Way.
Right.
Yeah.
And the other part is, is actually the access, the access out of this area now is just a little bit north up the old Coburg Road and then you just jump right down into the gateway area. I think I'd like to see this stay employment. I mean, hotels are a great thing. They seem to be being built everywhere, but I would rather save this land for employment. So I would somewhat resist that.
Okay. So you agree with staff's recommendation?
Yeah.
And I think I do, too.
I do, too.
Seems to be general consensus on that. Okay. Stewart Road future zoning, the way I was seeing that is staff is basically saying, let's, let's wait on this one a bit. Is that?
Yeah. And the main reason for that is that through the process we've engaged in up to this point, we didn't feel it was appropriate to zone at E2. And that's what we were studying it for. So we, we thought it deserved some future looking at what R1 would mean for future infill and redevelopment and how the services need to be extended to that area. That was brought up during the process, too.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah. And I'm, I'm just familiar with this area and I know some of the, the problems that this, this brings up. One, it, it's next to, you know, I2 right now. In the plan, it's, what did we say? It's, it's zoned.
R1.
R1. Well, it's zoned R1, but in the plan, it's.
Light, medium industrial.
Light, medium industrial. It's an area that runs parallel to West 11. It has, it has wetlands across the street from it, so it's a natural area. You know, when, when we first started talking about this, there was a housing component that was going to be possibly making mixed use near, near EMX stops. There's an EMX stop that is right there that goes through, it's a, it's a corridor that goes through. If, if we go to and take it out of the study area and make it R1, then the setbacks on those properties are larger because you're doing your abutting thing. So basically, what you're saying is it was, you know, it was R1, but it was the, you know, they knew that it was right next to industrial lands and they've been that way for years. The services aren't there, city services aren't, they're not connected to city services. And so if we, if we take it out of the study area, we're basically saying, yes, it's housing and now you have to do the, the larger setbacks on that, that property, which is a, which is, it's an EMX, it's the EMX stop between Bailey Hill and Bertelson is right adjacent to that thing. So if that's going to get developed into any form of a mixed use or something, we already took the residential out for further studies. So if it's, now if we do it this way, it, and it does, does get developed, anything that gets developed, you have to have the, the larger setbacks because it's abutting there. So, I mean, it's, yeah, the people want it to stay what it is, but it's been, it's been, you know, designated in the metro plan as medium industrial. It's been that for, since what, 19?
82 at least.
82. Okay? So what we're doing by doing this is kind of taking it out of that and saying, you know what? Yeah, those are houses. We're going to let you turn that into R1, which is, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me. It's, it's, it's been zoned that, or it's been in the metro plan that way since 81. They've known that. Yeah, I would like my house to be, you know, that, too, but things grow. Look at Santa Clara, things grow. And we've seen the problems that that's giving there. If we want this to develop into more uses than a warehouse, you know, what those are is warehouses and small cottage industries and that thing there now. If that's going to develop over the next 20 years into something that's more, you don't want it to be right next to a house. And that house may, the land, the value of that land that that house may be on, may be more developed into industrial. Stewart Road, you can have access onto Stewart Road that goes right to Bertelson, which goes right out to Beltline, you know? So to take it out at this point, because how many houses are there on there now? Maybe nine?
Yeah, 10 or so.
Because they say that, you know, yeah, nine homeowners, I understand their plight, but yet we're, we're planning for years to come. So, because nine people that are non-conforming basically now?
Well, it's interesting. They're not non-conforming because they have a planned zone conflict, but they conform with their existing zoning.
Right.
So one thing to know is with the new E2 zone, we are recommending a setback between the zones, but that won't change by taking this out of the proposal to zone it to E2 because they're still R1 and they were R1. So the setback would apply whether we.
Zone it E2 or plan it E2?
Well, a couple meetings ago, we decided to delay the plan amendments. So we're not plan amending anything through the efficiency measures. We're just changing.
But when we write the new metro plan.
Right. And I think we could revisit it at that point and decide if it really is partly the employment area or more appropriate as a mixed-use area or even a higher-density residential area. You make a lot of good points of where it's located and what services it's close to. And I think those are, those are long-term planning, things that are very compelling and we should look at this area for higher-density residential. And we would still be able to get those benefits through a future plan amendment and zone change process.
I have Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Baker?
Well, I just was going to sort of echo the same thing Commissioner Borowski said. It seems to me, I mean, this, this area has been planned for industrial. We're suggesting E2 right adjacent to it. There are some limitations by abutting properties and developments right next to it that may actually hinder some of the redevelopment of this area as we want it. MX is planning to go out there and you're right, there's a major, one of the major facilities for, one of their stops is going to be right in that area. It just seems to me if, if it was going to be planned and I knew that, I could probably live with it because then we have, part of our ordinance says that I can rezone my property to E2 if I join E2. And I assume that would be from residential? Or is that, I'm, I'm asking that.
I'm not following.
I mean, particularly, I guess in this little area here, if I owned one of those residencies and I wanted to go to E2, because it's zoned R1, I can't do that unless it was planned E2, correct?
Well, it's planned light, medium industrial. So you could.
So it wouldn't get the E2.
Yeah, you could.
It would just have to be an individual application?
Okay.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, I was, I was going to mention some of the things that Terry mentioned that it doesn't really matter. We're not affecting the setbacks because we aren't, without changing the zoning, setbacks are going to stay in place until the zoning is changed. And also, we're impacting, we're going to, you know, we have these, we have a pillar in Mission Eugene, which is protect residential neighborhoods. And so that little property there, the section there, may have been zoned in the metro plan or planned, proposed in the metro plan for certain use. But we have other areas that are abutting these E2 areas that are residential on the south side of West 11. And those areas, I mean, we have a responsibility to protect the residential neighborhoods because these zones allow 80-foot buildings, you know, with, you know, and that's why we have those increased setbacks is to that reason. And there's, so it's not without, it's because, because maybe a lot of the buildings out there only get built as one story tall, but that's not what the code allows. You could come in tomorrow with a building permit application and build an 80-foot tall building right next to the residential area. So there's a reason for those enhanced setbacks, if you want. And we do have areas that are abutting these, some of these zones that are residential. Clearly, to the south, you've got lots of areas that are residential, so.
Well, I have myself in the queue, too.
I also want to mention one other thing about EMX. The ideal thing for EMX is it serves housing and resident, housing and business. Serving one purpose is not very effective for EMX because then you've got like a nine and a five usage, and then there's no, there's no usage the other times of the day. You really want to use that system all the time. So the ideal would be, you know, a mixture of housing and, you know, employment and commercial. I mean, the, you know, you really don't want industrial and nothing else there. It's not going to be as effectively used.
And I think with Commissioner Duncan and Borowski's comments, I, my question would be the setbacks, so because those are plan-designated industrial.
Matter?
It doesn't matter. So you've still got, you're, we're basically, by leaving it residential, imposing greater setbacks on the adjacent industrial that we're trying to encourage. Am I?
I think that's accurate, but we would be creating nonconformities if we resone them E2. So it's kind of a.
Okay. Is this something, I guess my question would be, are we, are we for sure going to revisit this when we get to the plan?
Yeah, it's on the list.
So it is on the list, okay.
I think it just needs to be included.
Okay. Commissioner, I don't, I don't know who had their hand up first. Commissioner Belcher did, and I was down here. Thank you.
Well, I think this area does need further consideration, but that's my statement. Further consideration. I think this is too small a discussion space to make decisions on these properties. I think we need to wait until we look at the zoning options with the zoning proposal.
Okay. Then I'm going to go Commissioner Mills, and then Commissioner Duncan.
So as I think I've heard the discussion evolve, I'm understanding that these are R1s, but they could be purchased and rezoned to E2. Is that correct?
Yeah. And through, they'd have to meet the siding criteria that we adopt.
That would be something the owner could elect to do.
Yes. And they'd have to study the services.
And any other discussion we're having about taking it from R1 to E2 feels like a downzone, a downzoning on them. So, I mean, they're R1 right now.
How would it be a downzone?
Well, I mean, you're, well, maybe not. I guess that would be an upzone. Okay. So we would be upzoning them. But I think, and then I get a little worried about the typical concern that Commissioner Duncan discusses about having a perceived nonconforming use, which would tend to push them out, which I guess is what we want. But I'm not sure that it's fair to the current owners.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that I wasn't talking about the residential property on the south. I was only talking about Stewart Road when I was talking about setbacks and things.
Okay. Are we ready to move into the numbered topics? I know we've already covered some of these, so I'm hoping we can.
What are the numbered topics?
I'm in our agenda, page four. So the key issues and staff recommendations. We started with the potential nonconforming. And so we've covered those key issues that were on the left, but I also wanted to walk through the six issues that were listed in our AIS, starting on page four. So the first one would be siding criteria. Is there any other discussion on that? Does that make sense, the way we're doing this? I'm not seeing any comments, so I'm just not sure if you're.
I'm following you.
I think the confusion is, we've covered a lot of these already in the first.
We have. I just want to make sure that somebody didn't say something on these first issues that was waiting for the one through six. So, yeah. Commissioner Borowski?
I guess just a little concerned, and I don't know if it's warranted or not. But so we've got the boundary area, and then somebody wants to add a property that's E2, okay, and it's next to it. So we say, yep, that meets it. And then the guy next to him wants to do it, and it's contiguous and it meets the criteria, yes. And then the guy next to him wants to do it, and we get these little spider legs or fissions going out. Is that something that staff has thought about? Is there a, I don't know. I mean, it's just, it's just something that, okay, I've got 10 feet that touches, 10 feet of my lot line touches an E2 thing. It's contiguous. And now I've got another, you know, I've got a piece of farmland or what, I don't know even what it could be. I'm just wondering if that's been thought out in that.
We gave it a lot of consideration as we looked at what this addition of the or as opposed to the and would mean. And the limitation on what you're describing, the tentacles, really would be the plan and the fact that this is being implemented through the light, medium, industrial. So it couldn't go too far.
Couldn't go into residential areas.
Exactly. It wouldn't creep into residential. You know, the zoning wouldn't be able to override what the plan designation is. And the most likely thing for it to be adjacent to is I-2 in that light, medium, industrial. Those are the only two zones that implement it, with the exception of Stewart Road, of course, since we just discussed that nonconforming issue. But that's certainly something we gave a lot of credence to.
And I mean, is adjacency, could it be one yard of property? I mean, could somebody go and buy, you know, I want, you know, to buy 10 feet, or I want to buy one yard by 300 of your property so that I can make it contiguous?
Sure. I think you could certainly play those sorts of games if you, if you were inclined to.
So when you, you could, but through the zone change process, which is a type three land use application, you have to show consistency with these siding criteria and also all the zone change criteria. So that's where you bring in refinement plan policies, orderly services, and transportation, and all those things that you have to consider when you change a zone. So.
So the zone change makes it harder to play those games.
These are the minimum siding criteria. You could look at it that way.
Okay.
Buck, can I have another question?
Okay.
Wouldn't that require a partition of that lot to get your one by 10-foot piece of property?
Well, yeah, we can't change zoning without changing zoning, so.
You can do a lot, you can do a lot line adjustment.
Okay. But again, that's a public process that would have to be.
And that doesn't change the zoning. I mean, you can change your lot lines, but that doesn't change the zoning. You still need to go through the process.
Okay, I have, okay. Sorry. I have Commissioner Mills, and then Commissioner Baker.
I'm going to apologize in advance for taking us back a step.
Uh-oh.
You asked if we had any other clarifications or concerns around the key issues. And I wanted to just speak very briefly to land inventories and the question that I asked during the hearing. You answered a question that I didn't ask, and maybe, I'm going to say I probably wasn't clear in my asking, because that's my assumption. You answered in terms of jobs, in terms of how the land, my real concern was the inventory that would be available to nonprofits, churches, and some of these other uses. It sounded like during the course of the hearing, we were hearing that they were, they were feeling squeezed, and that there wasn't going to be as much land available. So my question regulating to inventories was for some of these uses. And I'm not sure, I know I don't know how to even answer that question, but it was, it was a concern that I felt coming up. So that was the question that I asked. I wasn't, in this case, worried about jobs. I was worried about what was going to be available to these organizations, and if was it changing significantly. So.
Okay.
That was, I just wanted to clarify what my question had been. I don't know if you, Terry, I don't know if it's possible for you to answer that.
Yeah, I can answer it in a general way. Ballet studios and all of those are, we treat them as commercial uses, so they're just part of our commercial inventory. As far as the churches and other, we call them semi-public uses, we did do an inventory of those and a projection of future need. And my recollection is that we found we did not have a need for additional land. And so that's why we didn't propose efficiency measures for semi-public uses or expansion for semi-public uses. We do have an expansion need for parks, and that's a particular kind.
That's very helpful, because that was really what I was worried about, if we were somehow impacting that need. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have Commissioner Baker, then Commissioner Duncan.
I was just going to clarify that a little further.
Okay.
I was on the team that did that, and we actually found that semi-private uses in general had excess land that they already owned adjacent to their facilities. And when we looked back at the historic development of those over 20 years, we found that to be less than the amount of additional lands that they had adjacent to their facilities already. So.
Running ahead there.
Apparently. I think they do that. I think they tend to buy more than they need because they can become, they're nonprofit, it's not taxable, and then they can use the land as they need it.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, just, just as an aside follow-up on that, just, you'd always want to have a concern about some new church or religious group that decides to build. And so they may not already have land. They may have to acquire land. So I don't quite know how. So it would be helpful also to know what the typical size would be or reasonable range, and that there are parcels that are available in that size range. I was just going to comment that. I don't think there's really a problem with a lot of spidering. If you look at the map, you see a lot of the, with the exception of Stewart Road, you know, a lot of the planned boundaries are on major streets, and so that you're not likely, you can't really, you can't jump across the street. It's no longer adjacent, you know. It's not the same adjacency if you jump the street. You know, that's not always the case when you're looking at the south, but that's residential property, and you'd have a lot harder difficulty getting a zone change of industrial within residential rezoned property. So I don't really think there's that much of a concern about spidering outward, except in a few cases like Stewart Road and some of the stuff. And there's also wetlands that are in the west.
Commissioner Duncan?
Well, I read that a little bit differently. If I understand, this is sort of the request that I think it was Arlie and company had way out West 11th, out at Willow Creek. So you're spidering, in my mind, if we allow the leapfrog down the arterial, one could get that zone change on the, on a parcel fronting West 11th.
Mm-hmm.
And then it could slowly move back down the road, down, say, Willow Creek, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was thinking. Not so much.
I'm not sure what I think about that.
Right. There are differences in the code as we've drafted it for E2 when you're on the arterial versus off the arterial. Retail is the biggest one. But in our thinking about that area, the whole I-2 business park that's right there, we thought we needed to look into it a little further and see whether one of these new zones was more appropriate than the other, because it could be that E1 is better for that.
Which industrial park you referring to?
Well, where the Arlie parcel is, and then south of there, there's an I-2, I think it's West Tech North.
West Tech.
Yeah.
Oh, right. And I guess, and I understand it for properties along arterials because they don't tend to be truly, they don't have that industrial flavor all the time. I mean, you don't have to be right on a arterial to have an industrial use where you, maybe you don't even want to be on the arterial because there's just not a reason to be there. You'd rather be a side or two back. And I sort of understand the, along the arterial, but I wonder about this keep-moving-south type thing, or keep-moving-north away, and all of a sudden.
Right.
But to me, the I, or the E zones are going to be a better employment zone than the I's are anyways. So, and they're going to allow most of the I uses, so.
That's how they're currently crafted, the E2 would function.
Because they're not separate from each other. They're almost identical, they're reasonably identical to each other, and you can kind of keep moving. So I guess if we have a market that shows that the E is better than the I, and that's where we're actually getting utility out of our land versus letting it sit vacant there forever, I guess I can support that. I'm going to think about that a little bit more.
That's been the general feedback we've gotten, is that the property owners who have industrial land, and this happened at the, we presented this draft to the Chamber Group, the Local Government Affairs Committee, the other day, and there was a lot of comments that they wanted the E2 zone in all the I-2, basically, because it was, and not that they need the retail component so much on the arterials, but that the, all of the I-zoned property could benefit from this. And we have not studied that enough to say, you know, that's a good idea or not. But that has been the feedback rather than the other way. Nobody's saying, no, I don't want E2. It's more, yes, we do. How far can we have it, kind of a thing.
Good. Commissioner Borowski?
And I guess, I mean, that's kind of where I was thinking, you know, that Arlie wanted it, you know, and then it goes down. And that goes to something that some of the other commissioners were saying, you know, we've got some places that we could put three or four lots together and get a 10-acre or get a 15-acre site. But if you're, if Arlie puts theirs on there, and then the site that's next to Arlie's, that was I, you know, 2, you know, now it's E2, and then that breaks up that one, and then now we don't have a 20-acre site out there anymore.
Because it'll break it up, it adds two, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Not if you're putting smaller stuff in. And, I don't know. It was just a, you know, it was just a concern.
Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Baker.
Again, following the conversation, a lot of those sites out there are 1, 2, 3, 4 acres now.
And minimum lot size in I-2 is 6,000 square feet. So if they are existing, they can be subdivided.
So I guess I'm thinking that if we think I-2 or E2 is really a good zone, and it's going to afford more development, more employment, and it's controlled to a point where even though it, quote, spiders out, if we're actually finding that nobody wanted it as I-2, but the E2 small changes make it work, and we actually start getting employment, then I guess it's not a bad thing. Because the areas we're talking about spidering aren't going to be commercial areas. They're not going to be people putting retail in. They're going to be people putting businesses in, I would think.
And they wouldn't be allowed to unless they were on an arterial. So I think there are some cross balances, but you've raised some good questions for us to test some further scenarios.
Commissioner Baker?
I was just going to come back and say I have concerns, and I have to agree with Commissioner Jaworski on some of these overarching issues. We're making it, we may make the property rezoned more resellable and redevelopable, but not for industrial purposes. I think that's what's going to, most likely going to be the case. You know, a lot of these properties will be developed, but not for industrial, you know, not primarily for industrial purposes. We're allowing so much retail that we're making it so flexible that we've opened up, you know, large areas that weren't, that weren't set aside for retail, for retail. 50%, you know. You know, that's just, that's, I think, and so there'll be more real estate transactions. There may be more development. But did you get more, you know, industry rather than, you know, commercial industrial sites? So I think that's.
Well, there's a fine point there that I want to make, which is that we're not trying to argue that we will get more industrial out of these code amendments. We actually are making the case that we'll get more commercial. It's an efficient, yes.
Or commercial jobs, employment.
Yes. Employment. And so they could be industrial, they could be commercial office or retail, and that's, that's a huge part of the discussion.
Which is why we're changing it to an E-zone for employment rather than leaving it industrial.
But just to follow up on that, supposedly, we have an overabundance of commercially-zoned property already.
No, no. This is an efficiency measure to.
I know, but.
To change industrial to commercial.
Citywide, I'm told that we have, you know, we can't, am I incorrect? We don't have an overabundance of commercial?
No, no, actually, we don't have enough based on the Bull Lands inventory that we did, so this is an efficiency measure to try to meet that commercial need. We do have an overabundance of small industrial sites, 10 acres or less, that's where.
5 acres or less.
5 acres or less, yes. That's, that's where we had the.
Surplus. And that abundance is actually under 1 acre in most situations.
And a lot of those are in the West 11th corridor, and the reason the TRG recommended studying this area for conversion or allowance from industrial to commercial.
Okay, so then the purpose is to increase the commercial land area in.
Commercial jobs specifically, yeah.
And we have about 5 minutes scheduled for the rest of these topics, and I know we've covered, in, in our overall view, I think we've covered some of these, but I'd like to just go through and make sure that we're getting that, again, that 50,000-foot level look at them. So I'm going to move to number 2, and I know we've talked about ballet, dance, theaters, and churches, and synagogues. Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, very quickly here, and I'm speaking in the E1 zone, specifically ballet, dance, martial arts, and all that, there are none of them there now, and to permit them, I would think would defeat what I think should be in that area for the limited number of sites. I don't have a problem if a condition such as 6 was put on it, which is the same as, as I understand live theaters, that they could only occur in existing buildings. I would be, I would support that, but to stand alone and be new, I have a problem with based on the number of sites there and what I still see as a light industrial area for job creation. Based on that, I think there's only really one building that that could occur in, which would probably be the one bordering on Suzanne Way, which actually considered having an athletic facility and then went to some smaller incubator-type facilities. The rest of those I don't think would ever be converted to this. Churches and synagogues, I've already supported, so on, on item, and I don't have a problem with food and beverage for manufacturing being allowed in an E1 zone. So relative to this number 2, those are my comments on those.
And I'll, I'll jump in, I'm going to.
Hold on, I missed the last part. You said in manufacturing, you think manufacturing in E1, food and beverage is okay?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and apparel is okay.
That makes sense, yes.
Food and beverage manufacturing.
Yes, manufacturing.
We did kind of put out 2 options for allowing additional manufacturing in E1, just allowing them outright, or limiting them similar to how we limit manufacturing in the C zones, and so that, that's a topic we'll want to get into when we have time.
And my question is, the National Academy that's on Oak Patch.
Yes, that's a C zone.
Is that a C zone?
Yeah.
Okay, wasn't sure, okay. Commissioner Belcher, I was just going to go around.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Jaworski. I see an awful lot of the uses ballet, dance, martial arts as going into existing buildings that aren't being used for other purposes because of the profit margin or whatever of those businesses. That makes good sense to me, but to open it up to allow new facilities does not make sense to me either.
Can I clarify your feeling on that?
Yes.
Would you want to add that limitation to just the E1 zone, or also the I2 zone?
I think both, but I'm not sure about that. My, my idea is to put them in places that are not being currently utilized, not having them move into the new sites, because I don't think they will anyway.
I think that's generally the trend, is they would look for an existing warehouse space that has the high ceilings and.
That's an advantage to them, I'd rather.
I haven't, to be honest, I haven't looked at every single I2 area to comment on that, but in general, I would agree with Commissioner Belcher in I2 also, it seemed to make sense.
Look at that.
On down the line, any comments? Okay, Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, on item number 2, I guess I'd like to jump to various manufacturing uses, and I, and I'm troubled, I think that trying to identify the industry categories by food, beverage, apparel, electronics is not the way to do this. I think you need to be thinking along the way that you were in terms of trying to categorize, is there an external emissions requirements, for example, that would allow it? I think doing it this way, I think, is just self-defeating, because we cannot imagine the kinds of things that people might want to do in these buildings that would be compliant in every other way, except that it's not a beverage, apparel, or electronics. And then you say things like a similar use to me, okay, that's fine, but what does that mean? So I think, I think a more global definition of what the local impacts would be from this manufacturing is more appropriate than trying to say what industries would be allowed versus not allowed.
Can I just clarify, those were in relation to adding a couple of additional manufacturing uses, so E1 already allows a sampling, I1.
Oh, this is just, you're saying that this is really, I'm not reading this correctly, it's really.
It would be an addition, it would be an addition.
It's long wisdom, and then they added a few.
Okay.
It's a little awkward, but yeah.
It is awkward, yep.
Never mind.
Any other comments on 2 before we move to 3? Oh, I guess Commissioner Borowski and Duncan.
I just had a question about, on the theater, live entertainment, and motion picture. What does live entertainment entail?
Theater production, so plays.
But it, it wouldn't be an outdoor stadium, would that be a live?
No, but I think it could though be a adult business is the other thing we sort of came up with.
Exotic dancing, I mean, you're starting.
Okay, okay, so it's not, it's not a, it's not a soccer field?
No.
Is it an indoor soccer field?
It could be.
Indoor track.
It could be an indoor track, yeah, I suppose.
Commissioner Duncan.
I'm in general support of number 2. When we get down to various manufacturing, I'll go for option 1 instead of some sort of limitations, but I, I would agree with Commissioner Mills that we look to external emissions and things like that as a control, which we already have because of other codes and.
Other agencies.
LRPAs and things like that. So in general, I don't want to limit, because one of my questions, or one of the things I circled was, if I actually have a manufacturing facility and I'm on a big chunk of dirt, I certainly don't want to limit it to 10,000 feet, because that says I can't expand, and that is, you can't manufacture much in 10,000 feet. That's a really small building.
Yeah.
Also on that, all industrial activity conducted completely within the buildings, that mean that the forklifts can't drive stuff around on the property to, you know, load and unload?
Question for Catherine.
Load and unload and.
No, it wouldn't prohibit them.
It wouldn't?
Would not.
Because you can't put the widget together outside.
I'm going to, I'm going to do a quick time check here, we're going over a little bit, and we've, we're at 12:48, and I know Heather wants to give us her portion, and so I'm thinking we're probably going to need to start with, maybe stop it here, because I know item 3 is one that Commissioner Jaworski brought up.
Okay.
Earlier, so.
Could I make a suggestion then? If, in your review and in your notes, you came up with topics that you want to talk about, just email them to Bill so that we can be prepared to talk about them at our next meeting on this, which is December 2nd.
Sounds good. And then we'll hit items 3 through 6, and then the line item, we'll start into the line item of the code. Commissioner Baker.
I was just going to suggest, you want us to go through our, each one of us to go through our complete list? Just run it down so that you have it in the record and you know what our concerns are. We're going to keep deliberating, it'll show for the record though.
You could email it.
Email it.
You could email it?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, just email it.
Yeah, because that might make us start thinking too.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that way, the people who might be watching this later on will see what we might be touching on later.
Is that email to all the commissioners, or just you?
Yeah, I think, I think email, and then email it to all of us, and then we'll consolidate that so that when we come back to deliberate, we have a, I think, a good plan of attack, a good starting point. So we'll pick up with item 3. So thank you. And next up is Heather.
Was this all mine, did I just keep?
That's all yours.
Did I keep throwing my stuff all over the floor?
Good, I was, because I didn't have the map, I didn't bring that package, I think the map, so.
Good afternoon, Heather O'Donnell with the City of Eugene Planning Division. Tomorrow night, we have a joint public hearing with Lane County on the proposed residential redesignations and associated refinement plan and zone changes. You're yawning already, uh-oh.
It's a tough crowd, Heather.
I know, I know, I'm going to have to liven it up here. So tomorrow night, I'll actually be walking through all of the redesignation sites, we'll be looking at them as a package, but today, because we've got a little, a couple different things going on with this package, I just wanted to walk through a couple of procedural things with you. So first is that you may have noticed that this is a legislative process rather than a quasi-judicial. So when we get the testimony tomorrow night, like I said, we're going to be reviewing this all as one package for the most part, and so the testimony will just come in in any order. I did package the testimony that we've received so far in your agenda by site where it was applicable, but other than that, tomorrow night, we'll, we'll just do it first come, first served. The public hearing will be joint with the Lane County Planning Commission, and that's because some of the areas that we're looking at are outside the city limits but inside the urban growth boundary, so they're unannexed. And so Lane County's participation is with, is regarding any metro plan amendments associated with those unannexed properties. The properties that are inside the city limits, and then the refinement plan changes and zone changes associated with those properties that are unannexed are just the City of Eugene Planning Commission per view. So those, these are our sites that we're looking at, Crow Road, Irving Road, Gillum, former Naval Reserve Site, and Rest Haven, the 2, oh, I'll have to fix that for tomorrow night. The 2 areas that have areas that are not annexed are Irving Road and portions of the Crow Road Study Area. So this property show, or this slide shows the Crow Road Study Area boundary in red, and the area that's grayed out is actually inside the city limits, so we just have this portion here, and then the rest of it is unannexed. And then this is the Irving Road, former Eagles Club, or excuse me, Eagles Lodge building right here. The whole property is unannexed. So this is Irving Road and Northwest Expressway.
And that's at the golf course. Do I see the lines as follows the road, east to west, then sort of, I'm sorry, the southern line?
It goes right here. Yep, this is the tax lot boundary, and hopefully tomorrow night we'll be able to see this a little bit better. If you want to look at anything further, we can hit the lights too. And then.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, we can go back. The other thing I wanted to mention procedurally is that one of the sites that we're looking at is the former Naval Reserve Site, this is on Chambers right here and 13th. As you know, we have received additional public testimony that we forwarded to you on Friday afternoon, and that is from the Jefferson Westside Neighbors. In general, there were a number of things that they covered, you have that information, so I'm not going to go over it, but they did request the Planning Commission to consider a public, public involvement proposal that they are going to bring forward after the public hearing. They, in general, their comments are around needing more public involvement on this property, commented that they don't believe staff is engaging the neighborhood outside of the public hearing process, and then included a letter, an August letter, to City Council where they had outlined a specific process for coming up with refinement plan policies for this property. And as you know, at this point, we haven't identified, we haven't proposed refinement plan policies at this point. Couple of things I just wanted to clarify, one is, I definitely wanted to clarify that we have offered to meet with, with Jefferson Westside Neighbors, you know, we want to make sure that that communication's happening. Since that hasn't been taken, that offer hasn't been taken up, we've tried to answer the questions to the best of our ability over email, so, so there's been a lot of email conversation about this. But we nonetheless want to make sure that if there is the possibility that folks in the area don't know that this site is being redesignated, we want to take any opportunity that we can to collect those additional comments. So one option, if the Planning Commission, we want your feedback on this, one option might be to hold an additional public meeting with the folks in that area, possibly do a survey as well. Because the public meetings tomorrow night, you know, we, we didn't, weren't able to respond before that, but we could hold the public, an additional public meeting in the first or second week in December. And then what you could do is, the Planning Commission could leave the record open until after that public meeting, giving folks enough time to submit additional testimony that might come out of a meeting with folks in the neighborhood. You know, because we'll be able to answer some questions, talk to them more about, about this site and how the affordable, how this site in the affordable housing program might work as far as public involvement, whenever the site's ready for actual development. And then what we could do is forward that, any testimony that comes out of that to Planning Commission by your deliberations. At this point, deliberations are scheduled for December 3rd, but as you know, there's a number of sites that we're talking about, so one option might be, if we're not able to have this additional public meeting until after that, you know, late the first week of December, or possibly the second week, then we could continue deliberations until, I think it's December 16th is, two Mondays after that, to at least deliberate on the Naval Reserve Site and anything else that might be left over. So.
And just to clarify, that is currently on your schedule, the December 16th deliberations?
So specifically, we do want feedback on that, and then if that's a, if that process or another one is recommended by the Planning Commission, we would make sure that everybody knows that. Tomorrow at the public hearing, we'll, we'll announce that in the beginning of staff's comments, so folks know that they can not only comment at the public hearing, but that we'll be having an additional meeting following that. That's all I have.
Commissioner Baker.
Well, I was just going to say, you don't have any information, you don't have the specifics from the neighborhood yet, or what, what they're proposing?
Well, what you do have, which we forwarded on Friday, was an email from Mr. Hyder from, from the association, and that includes an attachment, so I don't know if this is what they're, they are going to attach or bring forward later, but they had a memo to City Council back in August of 26th requesting that the City Council direct staff to proceed with the procedure that they outlined. And in the very back, it's, it's called Draft Conceptual Plan, it's the last page of the email that we forwarded, so that might give you some idea.
I was just going to suggest, since we're not completely sure, and we are going to be meeting tomorrow jointly, and might meet, be able to meet briefly afterwards, we should know what they are, specifics of what they're proposing tomorrow, maybe we.
No, because their meeting is tomorrow.
Yeah, their, their email from Friday, there were 2 emails, one from Wednesday, November 13th, which had the, the council letter attached, and then one on Friday, which says, toward that end, the JWN Board would like to request that the Planning Commission consider a proposal that we will provide by the end of next week, November 22nd. And I think it's because they have a board meeting on Tuesday, so.
Their meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was thinking that they were going to present, I didn't really date carefully.
Commissioner Duncan.
Heather, I thought when we were looking through the, sort of the Gillum, call it the Gillum Road area, I thought there was 2 separate parcels up there at one point that we were looking at. Did one of them drop out?
Yep, there was one on the corner of Ayers and Delta Highway. Yep, there was one on the corner of Ayers and Delta Highway that was part of the Nine's Golf Course, and the property owner requested that we not re-designate that property. Is that the one you're thinking of?
I thought there was one more towards the southeast out of there.
So, let's see. I brought these just in case. So Gillum, here's the Gillum Road Site circled there in red. The Ayers Road Site was over to the left. Was it somewhere else around here?
More southeast of the Gillum Site.
Mm-mm.
Okay. My bad.
Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Jaworski?
Well, I think it is important to hear what Jefferson Westside wants, and I support the idea of leaving the record open so that sufficient analysis and response could be made. My other question is about the Rest Haven Site. We talked earlier about a conditional use permit that's pending. Is that, how does that play into all this?
Well, so they currently have a conditional use permit for the property for the cemetery use for the whole property. They have submitted in the early 2000s a conditional use permit for housing on the southern portion of the property. That process is all kind of separate of the plan designation, whether or not it changes. Changing the plan designation doesn't affect those. They, they, they still have an application that's sitting there, and-
We did ask you at that time to get back to us to explain why that's still a pending CUP. I realize that's not germane to now, but the question is still there.
Yep, I think I've forgotten to do that, so we'll get you some, a summary of why that's still pending.
And it may not be germane to this hearing, but it's still a question worth asking.
Yeah, it's still in their court, and at their timing, they would be the, the party to re-initiate it.
But I think the question was, why did they have such a long period of time to reopen that question? That seems unusual. But back to this particular proposal, this is speaking to the northeast portion of the property, which is not the area that's of great concern to nearby neighbors, if I recall.
No, we're proposing to re-designate the entire property from parks and open space. It's all designated parks and open space. It's currently basically from about 40th North, it is zoned public land, and then the rest of it's zoned R1. So what we're proposing is for it to be re-designated and then rezoned, so it's all low-density R1.
So then my question becomes, in the conditional use permit, there was sort of a buffer along a ridge line, more or less. How would that play into this re-designation?
I mean, at this point, that is all part of the land use application review process. We aren't proposing anything at this time that would require a buffer, but they do, they, at this point, I think they do have, you know, that land use application in, and they would have to address whatever the criteria are that would be applicable to that land use application. So more the development-related criteria would be addressed at that time.
So there's no way at this point in time where we could say, split-zone the property so that part was park and open space? I'm just concerned about the neighbors' belief that they had an agreement on how that property would be re-designated, and now we're gonna rezone it, would that understanding go away?
So the, the designation change, so currently, the southern portion is already zoned R1, so that's not changing. It's the plan designation. And under, even if the plan designation didn't change, the R1 zoning allows development of controlled income and rent housing without you having to consider the Metro Plan designation. In this particular case, my understanding is that because they've got an existing CUP that is for cemetery over the whole property, if they want to do housing, they have to go back and amend the existing conditional use permit to take out that portion for housing. So it's complicated, because there's already been a review of this property as far as some of the procedural things like that that they still have to do, and those things are all applicable regardless of what the plan designation is. Really, the plan designation being changed to low-density residential just recognizes the fact that we do anticipate housing on the site. They have submitted for that, it hasn't gone anywhere yet, but-
Again, I'm not, is there a way at this point in time where we could resolve that conflict rather than having to wait for a further process to resolve it, or is that the real, is that really the logical place where that should take place? Am I making sense?
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
The neighbors are losing something in this process.
Sure. You know, again, I mean, the, the buffer for that site came out of the conditional use permit process. It was not a requirement of the Metro Plan, it came out of the conditional use permit process, so, so that is where we have deferred that, those requirements to, is through the development process. Could you, you know, do some other measure, like you were saying, re-designate, you know, key part of it, parks and open space, either through zoning or designation or something like that? Yes, the Planning Commission could do that. I don't know that that would be supported, you know, I don't, I don't know how that would work with the property owner, because they've already got, you know, like we said, they've got a conditional use permit, they want to do housing, they've got a whole separate development review process that they already have to go through, so.
Well, the other player here is the neighbors, and I think they would be more comfortable if they knew that there was a river to park and open space that would protect that buffer that they think they already have.
Sure. Associated with a cemetery. I mean, you know, that buffer is associated with a cemetery use is what, is when that was required, so.
Understood, but for uses, gotcha.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Not to bounce around, but could you go back to the Gillum map, please? When this, Gillum was first discussed, there was, I think I raised an issue of why not consider to the south, there's some commercial. Was that ever looked at? Were the neighbors ever asked how they felt about the re-designation and also potentially the commercial in the southern portion there?
So it's current, just to be clear, currently, you're talking about this property right here.
Is that the whole property you called commercial?
Yep. The southern part is, the southern property, excuse me, is designated medium-density residential about right here at the intersection, and then there's commercial designation in here. We had actually contacted both of these property owners very early on about re-designating their properties if they had any interest in down-designing. This property owner to the south did not respond to our inquiries for a change in designation or anything. They didn't, they didn't contact us at all. And so we proceeded with this property owner because they, they did express an interest in re-designating to low-density residential.
So the re-designations only occur not based on needs of the city, but based on what the property owners want to do? Is that what I understood?
You know, we brought some of these questions to the Planning Commission at one point, and, and that was the direction that we were given at that time was work with willing property owners. We really wanted trying to find a solution of property owners that want to be re-designated. And so when we, folks we didn't hear from, we assumed they didn't want to be re-designated.
Okay, well, not to confuse re-designation for what's happening in E1 and E2, some of those property owners are objecting to what's being done there, and yet it's being done. So I, I have a question as to, you know, why it didn't go after what the city needs for that, and then ask all the neighbors in that area, I guess similar to what Jefferson Westside is saying, what they feel about that little piece being commercial. But you're saying that wasn't done?
Right, it wasn't, because that property owner did not indicate an interest. So, yeah, like I said, we, at that point, that was our direction, and we went, we went with that.
And that direction was specific to these re-designations where we're looking for areas for additional single-family homes and multifamily homes in the case of the Naval Reserve Site. It didn't pertain to some of the other efficiency measures that we've been pursuing under employment lands. So that's how we have structured this process.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan?
First, I'll comment. Living in that general area, we would love to have more little neighborhood commercial nodes. We don't have it, we have to travel long ways to find any, so little neighborhood pockets would be greatly appreciated. Back to the Rest Haven piece, this is an inventory question. Are cemeteries considered to be committed uses in our land inventory?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know, thank you.
So just to clarify, so currently, because the property is designated parks and open space, we considered, we did not assume any housing on the property at all.
I just want to make sure that if we changed the designation to low-density residential, that we weren't gonna consider the cemetery as land inventory to build homes on, because there's nothing there now?
No.
So I'm okay with that, as long as it's committed, that's what I care about.
See all those hands? Okay, I have Commissioner Baker next, and then you guys tied, so.
And I-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a concern about this, this West Haven Cemetery property and also Irving Road. In both cases, where there's been a indication that there's a shortage of neighborhood parks in both of those locations, and although you can re-designate, I mean, you can put a park in an R1 zone, it's a lot easier to put a park in a public open space zone because it can't, you have control over that. I mean, in other words, before it can be converted to residential, it has to go through a zone change, whereas if we change, if we change the Metro Plan for these areas, and I don't know what it's currently zoned now, Irving, I mean, I don't, you know, if, if, if these are changed to R, to LDRs, I mean, I would feel more, I should say, I would feel more comfortable if we set aside a small area to make certain that we're more likely to get a public open space there, because we've already determined that there's a need. Maybe there's not funding, but we know that there's a need, and we need to allow for that in the future. And the LDR does zone, doesn't specifically designate any of that area as public open space. It designates it all for housing. And although you can use it for public open space, you know, we're, it's sort of like we pass the ball down the road, and, and then it doesn't happen. And that's what's happening in our community, is we're not building parks where they're needed, you know, where we're getting development.
So just real quick, yeah, a lot of our parks, actually, and even park-owned but undeveloped land are zoned and designated low-density residential, R1. I definitely see what you're saying. With the Irving Road property, Parks and Open Space Division staff is in negotiations with the property owner for purchasing some acreage on that site for, for parkland. So rather than trying to designate part of that site when they haven't, when they don't have it determined yet what part they're actually gonna purchase, we, and Parks was okay with this, with it being entirely re-designated to low-density residential, it matches the zoning of the whole property, which is R1. And then they can figure out the exact location according to park needs and the, and the property owner needs. So that's how that one's proceeding.
And I want to say that I'm uncomfortable with that process, because if it falls through, at the last minute, Parks doesn't have the money, and it falls through, then, and then then the next owner is not willing, you've just lost your chance of getting Parks, you know, a park, you know, park built in that area that needs it, because now we don't have any land designated for it. It's, you know, it's just, we've lost our opportunity to do that. And so that's why, I, it's not ideal, you know, you'd love for this, but it seems to me that they obviously know what corner or what area they're considering if we, if we looked at that drawing for that site. We know, you know, it's, you know, you know, we know pretty much most likely, they probably know already which, which corner or whatever they're gonna go for, that they think that makes the most sense. So if you did, you know, you're gonna do your blob drawing anyways for this, if we did that, then we would lock in that there's some parks and open space in the Metro Plan where we know it's gonna be needed. And I have the same concern about the cemetery site, even though it's, I mean, right now it's zoned parks and open spaces, I recall?
It's designated parks and open space, it's zoned public land, R1.
Right, so all we need to do is not change all of it out of parks and open space to LDR in the north, where they want the, you know, we're gonna, we're, we just leave a piece, that's our best guess for now, and later on, if it doesn't work out, then, you know, it's conceivable to do a land swap or whatever, and re-designate, you know, some other property there. But that way, at least we've guaranteed for the future, for future Eugenians, that there is, we thought ahead and planned to put some parks and open space there where we already, we've already determined that there's a need. And that's, you know, those are my-
I have Carolyn.
Just, just a couple of thoughts on that. I agree with that, and recognize where we do have deficiencies in the system, this is an opportunity, and so I think Parks has jumped on that and is in negotiations, as Heather said, on, on this site right here, and I certainly hope that they, they can reach agreement. One of the challenges with doing what you're suggesting is that we've said that we only want to work with willing property owners on the re-designation issue, and I think, you know, there's a strong chance, I'm not sure about this site in particular, but with the cemetery, I don't think that they have interest in that, so they may not want to do the, they may, you know, just pull out entirely. And then the other thing is, Parks only acquires property from willing sellers, too. And so if we take both those into consideration, it makes it difficult to kind of do as you suggest by, by just not re-designating certain areas, because I think what we might see is that people just don't choose to re-designate. So that's just for consideration and understanding some of the ramifications of that approach.
And I have three in the queue, and we're at time, and Commissioner Borowski hasn't had a chance to weigh in yet, so I'm gonna put him in first, and then I've got Commissioners Jaworski and Belcher.
Yeah, part of it is process, and part of it is kind of addressing this, this thing. So on this parcel, where it is the joint, Lane County and us, I'm just not real sure how that deliberation's going. I mean, we deliberate on the 2nd and the 16th, and then do they deliberate, and then we do have a conference committee, or how, how does that work? Or is it deliberations together?
Yeah, well, I think unlike the public hearing where everyone's just testimonying, giving testimony on all of the sites, I think what might make sense for the deliberations is that on the 3rd, that'd be the joint deliberations, and maybe the Planning Commissions would agree to cover the two sites, or the two areas that are joint jurisdictional, so Crow Road and the site. And then if the other Planning Commission, if Lane County wanted to go, they could, if they wanted to listen to the rest of the deliberations, they could do that.
Okay, good. So that gives me an idea of how that, how it's gonna work, because I wasn't sure about that. And then the second part, I understand exactly what Carolyn's saying about the willing, the willing participants, and it goes from my recollection that when we, when we were discussing this in this room earlier in the year, the Irving Road people kind of were willing to kind of say, yeah, we want, we want to keep part of this area as open space and be a, a good work with it, and, and I think that that could be done without designating it. And it seemed to me that Rest Haven said, you know, hey, if we, if you want to redevelop, if you want to do it to get your, get your number of residential, you know, to get more residential numbers in the UGB, yeah, we'll do it, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get limited as to what I'm gonna do. That was the feel that I got from the property owners, and so to do what you're saying, I think that that property owner would pull out and just build it the way he, he can build it right now. And so, I mean, I think if you, you know, the carrot as opposed to the stick, you know, might be the way to go with this, but, you know, parcelling off little things and saying, this is what, in a, in a, in a perfect world, we would like as the city, yeah, that would be great, but they don't have to buy into that if they don't want to. So you've gotta have- So you've got to have, you've got to have buy-in on that. And so, you know, saying you've got a nice area on, you know, in the hills in South Eugene, let's try and keep some of the trees there, and that'll help you sell more lots because it's more inviting area to, to live in, you know, as opposed to building on every single thing. So I, I understand where Commissioner Baker's coming from, but I don't know if that's achievable in the real world.
I had two more in the queue, and now I've got four, so.
Mine's actually about the hearing.
Okay.
Mine is really quick.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski first, then Commissioner Belcher.
Yeah, I just want to be supportive for once here. I'd like to say I support what Commissioner Duncan has said, as a resident up in the Gillum area on a commercial site. It also supports my thing that if the neighbors have been asked what would occur out there, we might have an expansion of that commercial. As it exists now, there's only accessible Apple of Ayers Road, which is a very difficult road to travel. And if anything of minor significance commercial was built there, we would have some major problems. If that was expanded out to Gillum, you'd have another way in or so for a commercial, if in fact that's what the residents did want out there. Secondly, I'd like to support what Commissioner Baker had said, or at least pursue the utilization of parkland for some of these developments. I know in the negotiations, even if it's a small piece of park, it doesn't have to be major in all cases, that would allow whatever they get for the sale of the parkland and probably what they get for allowing some more residential units to be built because now they don't have to, they can get a waiver on some of their open space requirements because the park is right there where their facility is. So there's a balance there that could be pursued to have that occur.
Commissioner Belcher.
I'll try to be quick because I know we're going to negotiate all this, too. In the case of the program, the project or the property proposed for change up in the Santa Clara area, I'm very pleased to know that Parks is talking about that with the neighbors. There is a floating node in the Parks and Open Space Plan almost at that place, so it makes sense that the Parks and Open Space Plan is where that designation occurs. I'll have to say in passing again, that didn't come up until we asked the question in this hearing or this discussion as to why that wasn't being pursued as a park, but it is now, so I'm happy with that. The issue in Rest Haven is very different to me, that there is a conditional use permit for low-income housing that protects over that ridge. I would like to see that protection carried through when we designate the zoning. And it may be parks and open space, but the realization is unless it's a ribbon park, it really wouldn't be a functional park for use. So we'll see where we go.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was just going to, just quickly, that both of those parcels are currently designated in the metro plan as parks and open space. So both of those owners have, you know, have reason to get that, that plan amendment change, plan designation changed so it is low-density residential. You can't build housing in a public open space plan, so, I mean, except for some exceptions for low-income housing. So I think that there's reason to believe that they would both actually stay in the process, even if you required some small part of each parcel to stay its current designation because they have an incentive to do it. It's not like it's zoned for LDR and we're trying to force part of it back to POS, it's just the other way around. So, and if they bow out, then the whole property stays POS. So, and some later date, they'll reconsider, and we'll go back and do a re-designation. I just don't think that that's likely to occur. I think they're going to be more than willing to do the re-designation, whether you carve out a ribbon or whatever in one place and a corner in another, you know, and it just protects you so that if things don't work out right now, and then the church sells off their, our, LDR property, the next owner has no intention of negotiating and at a reasonable price, and then you've lost your chance for a park.
Commissioner Duncan.
Question about tomorrow night is, since we're down to four minutes, since we're meeting with Lane County tomorrow night, is it possible that there's a process, we could actually close the hearing on the two parcels that deal with the county? If there are no issues brought up or no one wishes to extend that, we might actually get to a decision tomorrow night and then leave the record open for the remainder? I guess I'm throwing that out as an idea that might save us some time if Lane County basically is going to buy off, which I'm going to gather they're not going to have any major issues. And I could be wrong. I thought there wouldn't be any issues on fences at one time, too.
I'll jump in, and I think the request was to just leave the record open on the Naval Reserve site.
Well, that's what I mean. We've never, we've never been specific on a site or something. It's either we leave the record open or we close the record. Can we close it on part, maybe deliberate with Lane County if we have time tomorrow night, and possibly move ourselves along a little quicker? I know we hate moving along at any rapid pace, but it'd be nice to try at one time.
Yeah, so we did ask that question, actually. And basically, what, what you would be doing if you decide to close the record on everything but the Naval Reserve is, think of it as like a topic. So you're closing the record on everything, but people can still submit testimony on this topic, the Naval Reserve. And so then when we get the rest of that information, it all gets added, it's all still one record. But that would allow you to, whether it's tomorrow night, start deliberations, or if it's on the third, it would allow you to go ahead and keep going until the record is finished for the Naval Reserve site.
I would just think that if, if we're together tomorrow night, and the, the public hearing doesn't go for quite a lengthy period of time, and we get sort of a head nod from, particularly Lane County, we might be able to deal at least with those two properties or those two re-designated areas might help us move along. Only a suggestion, boss.
I would be open to that. Reminder, we don't start until seven o'clock tomorrow night, so.
Right, because we.
We're already starting a little later.
Yeah, we have a separate work session with Lane County where we'll be going over the same things with them that starts at six, so.
Not us, but staff. But certainly, we meet at seven tomorrow night, and certainly if we, if the hearing goes such that we have time and there is that desire, I know, I'm certainly open to that. I don't know how late we have the building.
Maybe just float it to Lane County.
Yeah.
But I, I think it would be good to float that idea with Lane County because certainly if we can be more efficient in our deliberations, that's appreciated all the way around.
Although it sounds like Irving Road may be contentious. We may have some issues to deal with.
Possibly. Okay, that moves us. Anything else, Heather?
No, thank you very much for the feedback.
Cut you off. Okay, thank you. Other items from staff? No? Other items from the commission? Commissioner Borowski.
Well, I recall the email from Commissioner Belcher about the, the hearing tonight at City Council.
Clarification, that was sent to interesting parties, not to the commission, but still it's a question.
I see your name, I figure it's.
Well, I wasn't sure. It came from Melissa, and there were no listed recipients, so I wasn't sure.
I think it was everybody that had been connected with that whole process.
Nonetheless, please, continue.
I mean, I, so this is the public hearing on the.
Single-family code amendments.
Single-family code amendments, the, some S DUs and all of those types of things. In the work session, I know that there was, there was questions about how this committee voted, if there were split, if there are split votes, the council wanted to know what issues we were, we were split on, so I don't know if there, you know.
We did provide them with documentation of, of not just the issues that, that passed, but that were considered at all and what the votes were and things like that. So they, they have that, but it's still up to you if you would.
And, well, and I guess I had a, I had a question to, well, yours is related to the hearing, so go ahead.
I was going to ask you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you'd be willing to attend the hearing tonight, just say you're here from the planning commission, you're available to answer questions, should the council ask.
That, that's certainly one question. I'd have to look at my schedule, being short notice.
And the other thing is we're actually not deliberating tonight. Our deliberations are.
The deliberations are at a noon work session of City Council.
Yes, next Wednesday.
And what I was wondering is where, I'm certainly willing to be available for expressing what our, you know, thoughts were, you know, to give a, give a face to that, that information. Would it be more appropriate to have that at the public hearing tonight or at that work session? Can I even speak at that work session?
Only if we kind of had you at the table, and, and so I guess we would, we would do that if they continued to have questions, right? And so perhaps Commissioner Belcher's suggestion of an entree to say, you know, you've been provided with information about our deliberations, but if you have additional questions for us, we'd be happy to work with you, attend deliberations or anything. And that might give them the opportunity to, to follow up at that point. So it's not a bad suggestion.
I do think there's a lot of controversy, if not misinformation, out there that would be helpful for the planning commission to have an opportunity to respond to council requests.
Okay. So you're thinking that should be tonight, then? Yeah?
I'll be in tonight.
Okay. Pardon me?
I will. I was planning on going tonight.
Okay. I, I think, I think I can be there. Like I say, I'll have to check my calendar, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Both agree.
Okay. Mr. Baker.
Just a question. So when you forward that, is that part of the public record that the public can download when they?
Yes, it was an attachment to their AIS, so.
Right, that's what I thought. I was just going to suggest that maybe in the future, when you do that, you send us a, a heads up to the, to the AIS, you know? So in other words, just if we want to read over what was forwarded, just so we know if there, you know, if we might get some questions or whatever, just so we have a, that would be helpful rather than us always having to go to the city council side looking at the agenda, you know what I'm saying? That would just be a nice convenience thing for us if you could.
We could perhaps maybe send you a link to the agenda item summary.
Yeah, send, send us a link when, after we forward it.
Do you?
I do. Maybe if you're on the city council mailing list, that could be.
It probably wouldn't be if, if it is part of the mailing list, it probably wouldn't be too hard to just add us to that mailing list.
Well, I'm just thinking, she could send us a direct link to the AIS, because that's what we're really concerned about, you know?
All right. Well, with that, Commissioner Belcher?
Of items from.
Sure, absolutely.
I went on the city's website to review our BIN discussion about opportunities to have a better interface between R1 and multifamily housing, and it doesn't scroll. So the earliest, earliest date I could see from any one year was in approximately July. So there's a list of dates that you can pull up webcast, but it's truncated. So if you could look into that, maybe my, my particular web server that's doing that, but I can't go below that date. Which raised another question is, and I would like us to consider another BIN date. We haven't, we sort of had that one date, we had fruitful discussions, and it died. I think sometime in the future, I'd like to discuss whether we want to continue that process or what we're going to do with what we did that day.
Have to go back and look at those, those notes and.
Thank you. And then finally, I would like to request an opportunity for the planning commission to consider the economic forecasts on the rebuild of South Willamette Street and potentially have a work session and perhaps provide a recommendation to council on that process before they have their hearing, the, after the economic forecast.
Okay, I can pass that if it's, if this body would like to request that, I can certainly pass that along to Public Works. You don't have a formal role in that process, but if it's something that you want to take up, we can pass that along.
I'm proposing that to the commission to see if there's interest.
And I'll jump in and say I think I'm interested. I think it's a, a big enough issue that, you know, can we just do like a thumbs up or thumbs down?
You're talking about the striping project?
No, the economic impact analysis.
The economic impact.
And the project.
The striping project.
Yes.
Yeah, the change of lanes.
Because we're not talking about the South Willamette Plan.
Not the plan.
The striping project.
The street.
The rebuild of the street.
And I think all you're really saying is we'll jointly take a look at it together just to see what they, because.
Yeah, because like Carolyn said, we don't, we don't have a role in.
Not even a role in.
Decision-making, but.
That doesn't mean we can't offer our opinion.
Absolutely. So I, I'm seeing at least four or five. Okay.
I just want to see.
Didn't see.
There were five, five thumbs up, two thumbs down.
One sideways.
So shall I, shall I put out that request then?
Okay. I, I think, put out that request.
I like the Roman Empire approach.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. With that, we're adjourned.